Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting of the June 23rd Planning and zoning meeting to order. We will start with a moment of silence and then the budget of agents. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just for all. Roll call please.
Julius Wiggum?
Here.
Margaret Shepherd?
Here.
Andrew Knutti? Senator Barber, the second. Frederick McCoy?
Here.
Bernard James?
Here.
Coram Miss Percy.
Okay, and three additions and deletions to the agenda.
Good afternoon, Jeff Gaggen, Assistant Director of Community Development. There are no additions or deletions, I just wanted to make note that I did hear from Mr. Barber saying that he would not be able to make it tonight. And Mr. Knutti also contacted me and said he would likely not make it, he would be late if he was able to make it.
Okay, moving on, disclosure by board members and adoption of the agenda. Are there any disclosures? Seeing none, adoption of the agenda.
Move to the da.
Second.
Julius Wiggum?
Yes.
Margaret Shepherd?
Yes.
Frederick McCoy?
Yes.
Bernard James?
Yes.
General's voting motion approved.
Approved in a minute from the May 26, 2016 meeting.
Move to approve with the necessary changes.
Second.
Roll.
Julius Wiggum?
Yeah.
Margaret Shepherd?
Yes.
Frederick McCoy?
Yes.
Bernard James?
Yes.
General's voting motion approved.
No unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business.
Yes, this afternoon we have two items under new business. The first item, letter A, is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Riviera Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida, approving an application from Air Gas USA LLC, which is SP 1602, requesting site plan approval to develop a single-story, 15,107 square-foot industrial gas fill-in distribution facility on 2.92 acres of industrial land at 7,001 North Military Trail, which is located north of Dyer Boulevard, south of Beeline Highway, and west of North Military Trail, providing an effective date. At this time I'd like to ask Mr. DeAndre Spradley, our principal planner, to provide the board with a presentation on this.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, DeAndre Spradley, Principal Planner. Just to give you a project overview, the applicant is requesting a site plan approval to develop 2.92 acres of industrial land. They're wanting to build a single-story, 15,107 square-foot industrial gas field and distribution facility. They are currently operating on the parcel to the east of the reference site plan application. Here's just a site location map showing where the property is located. Here's an aerial map showing the same property. The adjacent properties to the north, there are industrial uses and a railroad. It has industrial future land use. To the south, there are commercial and industrial uses. It has commercial and industrial future land use. To the east, there are commercial uses with a commercial future land use. To the west, it has industrial uses with industrial future land use. And the subject parcel has an industrial future land use. Staff analysis, this particular project is consistent with and compatible to the city's comprehensive plan and the land development regulations. City services such as roads, water, sewer, and garbage collection are currently available to the site. Adequate parking has been proposed by the applicant. There were no objections from departmental staff, including police, fire, utilities, public works, and the building department. The new facility will hire 11 employees and they will operate Monday through Friday, 7:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The current tax value is $375,000, and that's before taxes. Estimated tax value of $2.3 million after construction. Here's the elevations. The west elevation will be basically facing from the west, there's like a industrial area there now. The east, that would be if you were facing on Military Trail. And if you was facing west, that would be what you'll see. The north and south elevation, basically the south elevation will be the main entrance, and the north elevation will be the rear entrance. Here is some color renovations, color elevations of it. It's kind of hard to see on the screen, but they are proposing just like a light gray color with a mixture of off-white. And this is just more elevations. Here's the overall site plan. And the applicant, they are going to be doing a master development plan. If you notice that basically the building that's located on the right, they will, which is their existing building, eventually they will be coming back and doing a demo of that building and building a new building, as you can see in this particular one here. Here's a photo of the property. This is on Dyer Road, facing north. This is along Military Trail. This was across the street from Military Trail. In conclusion, staff has recommended to the board to consider approving the proposed site plan with the following conditions: A two-year landscaping performance bond for 110% of the value of landscaping and irrigation shall be required before the certificate of occupancy is issued. Construction must be initiated within 18 months of the effective date of the adopting resolution in accordance with Section 31-60B of the City Code of Ordinances. Demolition, site preparation, or land clearing shall not be considered construction. Building permit application and associated plans and documents shall be submitted in its entirety and shall not be accepted by city staff in a partial or incomplete manner. All future advertising must state that the development is located in the City of Riviera Beach. Fees and penalties in accordance with City Code Section 31-554 will be levied against the property owner and business for violation of this condition. This development must receive final certificate of occupancy from the city for all buildings and units approved within five years of the approval of the adopting resolution, or the adopting resolution shall be considered null and void, requiring this applicant to re-submit application for site plan approval and re-initiate the site plan approval process. Once approved, the adopting resolution shall supersede any previous site plan approval resolutions associated with this property, causing previous site plan approval resolutions to be null and void. Once approved, City Council authorizes city staff to approve future amendments to the site plan administratively so as long as the site plan does not deviate greater than 5% from the originally approved submittal. And the developer agrees to execute a unity of title between PCN 56, 42, 42, 36, 39, 000, 0020, and the other parcel prior to the issuance of a city building permit. And the reason that we are requiring them to do that is if you... If you look at the existing parcels right now, if you see the red line, see the line that's in the middle there, basically it's two lots, and what they're gonna have to do with the unity of title is will basically just create one parcel. So that's why we're requiring them to do that. And the applicant is here, if you have any questions?
Okay, we don't have any public comments, so we'll move on to board comments. Mr. Wiggum?
Yes, I have just one question. Now I noticed that the business will be open from Monday to Friday, Saturday and Sunday is closed. What kind of security do you have there now and will have to protect the building from any outsiders coming and doing any damage? You call something that go off on us in the city? You know, is it an alarm, guard, or what?
Harry Newkirk, Newkirk Engineering, only engineer record, 1370 North, US Highway 1, Ormond Beach, Florida. The site is required by Homeland Security to have fencing around it, so the entire site is fenced. And there are... You can't access the site during the day, all the gates are closed, so when someone has to drive in there, there's a video camera to let people come in, so not, the regular public can't just drive into the site. And they also have security systems in place for at night. It's linked up with the police, fire department. If some alarm goes off, they'll be notified immediately to the site. So it's got very good and required security, all from the government to, you know, local securities measures.
Thank you. That's all, Homeland Security.
Ms. Shepherd?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you enlighten me? I'm not too familiar with this type of business. What is the business? What does it consist of?
What we're proposing is 15,000 square feet industrial medical gas. What it will have mainly is oxygen and nitrogen for, you know, medical type uses. It won't be flammable source, but it'd be a distribution plant to fill all the area supply, Riviera Beach and local areas with medical gas.
You said you look to hire how many people? 11 people?
Currently...
To hire or to transform them from one plant to another?
Air Gas has been in Riviera Beach for 20 years, and their existing site where they're at, where this operation exists, they're at max capacity, and it's lacking security measures in place, because it's connected with other buildings. So this site is perfect, they can operate both their businesses in one location, and then we'll just transfer the employees over from the other side.
How many, how many employees do you have right now?
It's 11, 11 employees.
So you won't be creating no new jobs, you're just transforming them?
Tom Sullivan with Air Gas. Currently, the plan right now is to bring over those 11 employees, but there are future plans for expansion of our distribution area, which would create additional positions at that facility. Currently, you know, we don't have anything specific I can tell you now, but the 11 employees for sure are coming over from, they're looking at fiscal court now, and then again, planning further distribution area from that facility, which would increase the number of jobs there.
Do these employees live in Riviera Beach, some of them?
Oh yes, yes. I don't know exactly each one, but they live locally, in the, in the general area, yes.
And so you said the building will remain, and you're gonna work out of both buildings? Is that what you're saying?
Right, currently the, the other building that's there now is more geared towards industrial gas supply, so they'll supply welding shops, fabrication facilities, things like that. The building that we're proposing is gonna be specific to military, or excuse me, medical gas. So right now the customer base varies from hospitals all the way down to a Dr. Dennis business, to veterinarians, anyone who uses medical gas.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. McCoy?
Mr. Sullivan, just one question. You mentioned fiscal court, are you on fiscal court now?
Uh, yeah, the facility is part of like a road warehouse, and they're just one of the occupants in that building.
And are you doing medical gas at that fiscal court location or no?
Yes, we are.
So the industrial use that you were speaking of, you're gonna discontinue that?
No, that's gonna be separate, that's the, the building on the right. That's been there for several years, and that's gonna continue operating with an industrial gas customer base. So we're gonna move the medical facility into the new building we propose, and then they'll be operating out of there. Right now we currently lease the facility in fiscal, from fiscal court.
So the requirement for Homeland Security is for what exactly? Is it for the medical gas, is it for the industrial gas?
It, it's more geared towards the industrial gas, but since it's gonna be one parcel of land, they will all be encompassed.
Okay, nothing else, Madam Chair?
Okay, I just have one question in reference to the unity of title requirement. So that's gonna go through the title company, and then the applicant also realizes they have to go through the county property appraiser for the combination application, okay? And being that we're already halfway through the summer, based on the tax roll calendar, that combination probably more than likely will not go through for 2016 tax year. Probably won't go through until next year, so...
Yeah, as long as they...
As long as they do it, yeah.
That's all that we're looking for.
Okay, that's fine.
Madam Chair, may I ask one more question? I'm sorry, sir, may I ask one more question? I don't know if this is this type of facility, but I think it happened up in Jupiter. I think it was Jupiter, where that, I think air gas blew up there, and they had to stay out of that community for about a week. Is this the same kind of gas?
I can't speak to that, ma'am, I'm not familiar with the incident in Jupiter. This is compressed gases, oxygen and nitrogen is the main gas, there are some other gases. All are naturally occurring gases, oxygen and nitrogen are in the atmosphere. What we do is just, we actually cool it down and liquefy it, and we put it in those large bulk tanks you saw, and then we reverse the process and vaporize it into a gaseous state and put it in the cylinders, and then the patients would breathe that oxygen out of the cylinder. It's a much more economical way to transport oxygen than having it at a low pressure like that. So the gases that are gonna be on that particular facility, on that site, are non-toxic, non-flammable. The medical gases typically are gonna be nitrogen, like I said, oxygen, carbon dioxide, and nitrous oxide.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Did we have any other board comments? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second. Julius Wiggum?
Yes.
Margaret Shepherd?
Yes.
Frederick McCoy?
Yes.
Bernard James?
Yes.
General's voting motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to item B.
Yes, our second item under new business, item B, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riviera Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida, amending Chapter 31 of the City's Code of Ordinances entitled zoning, Article 4, supplemental district regulations, Section 31-546, swimming pools, in order to create standards for installation and use of swimming pools in the city, providing for conflicts, severability, and codification, and providing effective date. Once again, I'd like to ask Mr. Spradley, our principal planner, to provide the board with a presentation.
Once again, DeAndre Spradley, Principal Planner. Just to give you an overview of what we're attempting to do, currently the city's swimming pool regulations do not address modern swimming pool features such as infinity pools. The proposed amendment is a city-initiated project. The current swimming pool ordinance was last amended and adopted on March 17, 1982. During the process, we did meet with representatives from the Florida Pool Association, and they did provide comments, they reviewed it, the proposed language. And proposed amendments are consistent with and compatible to the current Florida Building Code. Just give you an overview of the language that we are proposing. The new language, it creates rear and side yard setback requirements for residential and commercial uses. Establishes a walk space and safely, a safety barrier requirement. Creates a minimum size requirement for commercial pools. Establishes requirements for a visual barrier. Creates rear and side yard setback requirements for residential properties on corner lots and double frontage lots. Establishes drainage requirements for patios or paint areas. If you were wondering what is an infinity pool, I do have some examples, little examples of infinity edge pool. Basically, it's like those pools that they kind of like disappear into the horizon. If you see like the edge there, that's why they call it the infinity edge. And I have a few more examples. This one here, you can see if you look around the perimeter of the pool, you know, most pools you have to step down, but if you see the water's edge there, it's like right at the edge. And here's another one, and if you look real closely, if you look in the background on the right side, that's actually a lake. And if you see that pool there, see how it kind of like disappears right into the water there? Staff has recommended the board to consider approving the proposed swimming pool regulations. And at this time, if you had any questions on the proposed language, I do have slides that have the language in it, if you want to go over each one individually, or if you had a question on a particular number, I will try to address those questions.
Okay, well, we're just gonna go through, because we don't have any comment cards. So we're just gonna start with the board comments.
Yes, I have one or two comments. I know that we have a stricter rule of regulation for commercial pools, like, you know, a hotel or something like that, a business one. I know we have strict ones on this, but now private home pools, those are the ones that concern me. You know, if you build a pool on a corner, if you got a house on a corner, you build a pool there. Some of them have, I guess, concrete walls up there, which is good. And that kind of helps the people, you know, not understand that there's really a pool back there. But in my neighborhood, one, one, one guy wanted, but he left the house and rented it out, which means the tenants are gonna be less safety conscious as the owner would be. If there are any things that we could regulate when we do a homeownership pool that would state to them that they have some kind of security, warning, or even a camera, or something that could help keep neighborhood kids from wandering in when the people are gone and getting the pool to drown. The second question I have here, some people that have pools have young children, three, four, five, and six years old. Are we requiring that they have some kind of safety fits around that pool from their house to keep the kids from wandering out of the house into the pool? Some kind of alarm or something? No, there are two things that I'm concerned about, the safety of the children.
Okay. I would to address, I think I can address both your questions all in one. Currently, under the Florida Building Code, a four-foot fence is required, like a childbearing fence is required all the way around the perimeter of the pool. And in situations where if they did not have the pool, they have to have either latches on their gate, like if it's, you know, an entranceway. But in addition to that, they also have to have like every access area, it has like an alarm that's built on the, you know, if, if door opens so many seconds, it goes off automatically. So those measures are currently in place, so did I answer both of your questions?
Yes, I think, you know, I, I, I know all of us are concerned about the safety of children in Riviera Beach, and that's probably on everybody's mind. How can we make the homeowner aware that strangers, when they're not home, get into that pool? Some kind of way, some kind of security, they've got to keep people out. And I, I know it's a hard thing to do, but...
Yeah, I would say other than requiring them to do the latch on the fences, the perimeter on the, around the pool for the kids, the alarm on the doors, there's not too much more that we can do.
I agree.
You know, that's, that's the code currently, and that's, that's the state of Florida's code, so...
Thank you.
No problem.
Um, let me just interject there for a second. So, just so probably for Mr. Wiggum, if we just explain the city's position as far as what we would do, it's not under the city's jurisdiction to go out and monitor whether those things are in place, because they're only coming to us for permitting purposes.
That is correct. So once, once they're done with, you know, once the permit has an issue, you know, unless someone comes and tells us, we have no idea about it. So it's, it's one of those, you know, I guess a good faith, faith, you know, type of situation where you hope that they keep the alarms on the doors, you hope that the latches are still operating.
And that, and that would be a liability on the homeowner as well, having the insurance on the home and having the pool, and if, you know, something like that was to happen, if a neighbor's kid, you know, wandered onto the property and it wasn't properly protected, you know, that would be an issue for, a liability for the homeowner, not the city.
I agree.
Just wanted to get that on record. Ms. Shepherd, do you have any comments?
No comments.
Mr. McCoy?
There's no requirement to have a fence, but there's a requirement to have visual barriers?
Right, the visual barriers is more, you know, they need some type of landscaping hedge or something like that. Like, let's say the, what Mr. Wiggum was saying about the corner property, you know, the visual barrier is basically for, you know, you don't want to necessarily see your neighbors out there, you know, nude or something like that, in their pool, so that's basically what the visual barrier is for.
Thinking about it.
That's it, Madam Chair.
Okay. I don't have any questions. I read through it, and I think it's an improvement, it's being, you know, revised since 1982. So I don't have any questions, so is there... So I don't have any questions, so is there a motion?
Reflectively, yes, I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll.
Julius Wiggum?
Yes.
Margaret Shepherd?
Yes.
Freddie McCloy?
Yes.
Renae James?
Yes.
Anyone's voting motion approved?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. On to general discussion. There are no public comments. So staff, is there any correspondence?
Thank you, Mrs. for having a good job. I just wanted to make note of a previous memo that was sent out, it was on June twenty-first, earlier this week. It is in regards to a planning official's training workshop. I did hear back from at least one board member, and they are interested in attending the training. If there are any other board members that wish to attend, the city will cover the cost of early registration, as long as we are informed prior to July first that we can register board members. So please just let me know if you're interested, and we can sign you up.
Okay, get that information to Joe by July first, and let's move on to items C, one and two.
I don't have any new updates at this time. I did want to just let the board know that we do have a few open seats. We have one permanent seat that's open and two alternate seats that are open. I would like to bring an agenda item to City Council relatively soon, so if you know of any interested PRP presidents that they want to serve on the board, just pass that information along, please.
Okay, there are any board comments? Mr. Wiggum, final comments?
No.
Ms. Shepherd?
None.
Mr. McCoy?
No.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, meeting adjourned.